Welcome to Coffee with the Candidates. It's Nancy Winandy here, CEO of Yankton Thrive. We have with us today Sherri Loost, who's running for the Yankton County Commission. She is currently serving on the county commission. And there are five candidates this year running for those three open spots. So Sherri, why don't you start by telling us a little bit about yourself?
Well, my family decided to move back to South Dakota in 2008. So we've been here for quite some time now, wanted to raise our sons in a rural environment. I grew up on a farm near Westington. My husband's from Colorado, so I convinced him this would be the place to move. And we have loved it ever since. He has acclimated to the South Dakota way of life, if you will. Our sons just left us. They're both in college this fall. One's at SDSU, one's at South Dakota Mines out in Rapid City. So we split times between the different sides of the state there. I ran for county commission, gosh, eight years ago, lost. Ran four years ago and was elected. I've served two years as chair and this year I, and two years as vice chair while I've been on the commission. Certainly enjoyed the time. There's been some challenges that we have dealt with, a flood, COVID, and then other things that come up with county government. But all in, I decided to throw my name back in the hat. I think there's still a few things to be done on that. And I think that I bring to the table skills that help those conversations to evolve.
So why don't you go ahead and share a little bit about those skills that might differentiate you from the other candidates?
So I have an interesting background. Obviously grew up on a farm. I have an engineering degree, chemical engineering, did that for 14 years. Worked in the ag processing industry. So I've been the hourly worker, pushing the buttons to make the pumps go, et cetera. I've been the engineer that had to figure out things that went wrong. I've overseen budgets in those areas, moved to the ethanol industry, designed an ethanol plant, oversaw a division that had property insurance, maintenance, startup training. A lot of different, essentially in the company, if it didn't have it home, it came to me under plant services division. So I think I learned a great deal about how to work with folks of all different backgrounds in there. Went back to school, got my teaching certificate, taught here at Yankton High School for three years, math and science. Really enjoyed that, probably my favorite job. It was tough to walk away from, but I decided at the time to spend more time with the kids. They were getting into more activities and such. So I had a high school business teacher who taught really good parliamentary procedure and business skills. So I think running meetings, being open to allowing the feedback in the meeting, keeping things civil. I think those skills have trickled in over the last four years that I've been on the commission.
One of the things I also noticed from paying attention to what's happening at county government is the road plan that you worked with a few other commissioners and then presented to the public. Can you just share a little bit more about that? Because I think how you presented that and put it together also helps differentiate you from some of the candidates.
Yep. So, gosh, when the flood hit in 2019, we essentially looked at our budget and gutted everything we had planned to do. So all the dollars were essentially in response to just getting roads open and gravel back on where it'd been washed out, et cetera. So we decided that was a great opportunity to really look at where we wanted to be in our county. What could we support with the budget that we had? So we gathered volunteers from across the county, organized townships, unorganized townships, which not quite half the county is unorganized. Don Kettering and myself were the commissioner representatives on there. So we had lots of meetings across the county and devise a priority, if you will, for A, B, C level type roads, for paved roads, hard surface roads. We didn't spend a huge amount of time on the gravel because it's mainly the paved roads that we were concerned with. So after that, the idea behind it was where should the dollars go first? And so if we had a windfall of dollars for some reason, or if some federal grants opened up that we could apply for, those dollars would go to A-level roads first. So that was presented to the commission. We walked through it, the commission adopted it. And lo and behold, the next year we have COVID come. COVID was not a good thing for the overall county itself. But in the end, we received significant funding to respond to COVID. So they have written the rules of what we can spend those dollars on. And we have the authority to put those into road structure. And you've seen that, if you live on the east side of the county, there's new surfacing going on, Walshtown Road 444, and that will be finished shortly. Next year, we're looking at going to the Tabor Road on the west side. But because we have that plan, we knew exactly where those dollars needed to be funneled. Bridges were in there as well. We've prioritized Stone Church Bridge across the James. We received a grant for that from the state. And we'll figure out, bids will be discussed on October 18th that came in there. So we'll figure out a plan for that going forward because we expected the bids to be much higher than the grants. So a little bit more discussion in that area. But without that whole road plan, again, you don't know where to put your efforts. Now, we did have a five-year plan meeting the other night. There was good public participation, lots of concerns with the roads that we labeled C that were ground, and the intent was to leave them gravel roads. So there was concern over that. So we walked through the methodology behind what we did. It does not mean we can't change our task force. And in fact, in the task force, we felt it would be wise to revisit it every five to seven years because things change, people move different places in the county. Budgets certainly change within that timeframe. So, but again, I thought it was a good effort on the public's behalf to get a plan and we're following it.
Well, segueing into budgets, management of the county budget is one of the most important responsibilities of county commissioner. What skills do you bring to the table for budget management? And what priorities do you have to create a balanced budget?
Yeah, well, we always have to create a balanced budget. And within the county budget, there are so many things that we're required to do. We have to have a court system, indigent care, the sheriff's office, the jail. And so many of those things, we really don't have a choice in doing. About the only choice we have is the efficiency with which we run each of those. So when you look at those in those budgets, you always ask now, is there anything that we could do without? So I would say 85, 90% of the budget is that. So at the end of the day, when you meet all the statutory requirements, the thing that always gets left out is roads and bridges. Because yes, we're required to have roads. We're not required to have them all of this level. So it's always easy to pull from that. We, I think over the last four years, have done our best to prioritize getting as many dollars into that area as we can. But my background, working with large ethanol plant construction and operating ethanol plant, corn plant facilities where you had a budget every month you had to meet. I'm certainly used to working with numbers like that. I'm kind of a geek. I have a spreadsheet where I have all of the budgets from 2013 to date. And I look at trends and what areas are increasing faster than others. And certainly you need to be concerned with those areas. So it's an interesting bear to get into because each line item has a statute associated with it. In fact, I still ask Patty, what is this again? And I'll look the statute up and figure out why we need to be doing. We have something in there where it's $25,000 we pay to the city because of when they took off the income tax. Years and years ago, they promised, and that number every year goes to the city. No inflation or anything. It's just an interesting, because everybody asks, what is that? And I said, well, I finally looked it up and figured it out. So it's, there's a lot of focus on it. We do it once a year. And then we try to stick to it. But this year, we only had a 3% inflationary allowance. And we all know inflation is 8, 9%.
Makes things challenging.
It certainly does.
So there've been a lot of conversations about zoning in Yankton County. Can you share some of your thoughts?
And zoning is probably the area that gets, with budget, the most attention. And we have made changes to our zoning. When we come into office, there was a large controversy over animal feeding operations. And there was quite a movement to try to get rid of those in our county or not allow them. The commission in the end took the stance that we need to be somewhere in the middle. We had a lot of conversations. The first proposal failed. The second proposal passed, three to two. So that tells you how controversial it was. We heard from all sides in that discussion. And I felt in the end, we tried to find some compromise that met a little bit about what everybody wanted. But everybody left with a skinny. And in the end, that's one reason I run as an independent is so I can say, you know, we need to be walking down the center of the road at the end. There's been a lot of talk about variances in our county. I am kind of labeled as the anti-variance commissioner, but we had a Supreme Court ruling that said there is a very high bar for variances. And when you start giving variances for the same thing over and over, something needs to be changed in the ordinance. Because that is something you've accepted to do. And we've done that. We've made some changes specifically around farmstead sites out in the county. And we are getting lots of plats that come through, less than 20 acres, because they qualify for that farmstead. So I felt that was a good change in zoning. But it's something that evolves over time. People's viewpoint change, the types of houses we are building change, the location those are being built. So you do need to be flexible and revisit it every once in a while.
So do you have any suggestions to enhance the transparency in county government?
We have made, certainly with COVID, that changed how we present our meetings to the public. We do Zoom meetings now. You can watch it on Facebook Live from the comfort of your recliner at home. So all of those are an effort to get our meetings out to the public. Certainly, and then the packet is available online. The packet's available. We do have a citizen who wants it printed. So when they come to our meeting, there's a folder on the state's attorney's office wherein the person comes up and thumbs through it as we go through the meeting, which is great. If people are interested in learning more details, certainly I encourage them to call offices where they can find that information. Valuation of your home, we've got the Beacon website. You can go out and find general information about all the properties across the county. We did have an effort early on to have remote meetings out in the county for the folks who live out further from Yankton. They can't always make it to our meetings. When COVID hit, those kind of faded to the wayside. And we have not picked them up. So that's our bad for not, probably in late 2021, we could have started having those. And certainly this year, we could have, but we haven't. And so that's our fault that we didn't pick that back up. I do think that is a good idea to try to continue those because we did have good participation with folks coming just to learn.
I will say, as someone who views the meetings online quite regularly, it is much more convenient than going into the county government center for the meetings, especially if there's one specific topic you're looking to hear about. And understanding you're not able to address the commission online. You cannot ask questions through the broadcast when they have it. So you just have to understand your limitations if you're watching it from, watching it electronically. What ideas do you have to foster revenue opportunities in Yankton County?
You know, and that's an interesting one because state law limits where we can get revenue. The county gets property taxes. We get some motor vehicle license fees, et cetera. But we cannot levy sales taxes. If we want to increase property taxes, certainly, in my opinion, those need to go to the voters. We do have the wheel tax, which we did increase. And we did that specifically to get more points on the bridge improvement grants. And that did help us to win that last one because we had 10 more points because we had a $5 wheel tax. So the tools we can use to increase revenue are limited. Certainly growth in the county. Anytime someone puts up a brand-new home or a business, et cetera, that's additional tax revenue that we do get to collect and add to our budget. So on top of the 3% CPI we get this year, we also get whatever growth we had last year on the funding. And it's interesting, when I took office in 2019, no, it was 2020, I took the chair position and I came and spoke when you had, I think, a state-of-the-community type functions right before COVID and everything stopped. But I spoke at that. And during my presentation, I asked the question to the audience. I said, how many people in here are focused on growing our community economic development? You know, you'd see kind of a few shy hands. I said, oh, come on, guys. You're here because you're interested in growing our community. And then I asked the question, how many of you get up every morning and think, how can I save the county dollars today? And I said, Don, you better have your hand up. Because Don Kettering was in the office that day. And of course, everybody laughs. But the thing about budgets and running a budget is you have revenue, but you have costs. And if you don't have much control over your revenue, you better have control over costs. So over these last years, I think we've tried to get back to focusing more on controlling the cost, doing more with less, if you will. As your community grows, can you accommodate all of that with the same staff you have? Are there programs out there that you can make your office work more efficient? So you don't have to add additional staff. So there's a couple of different ways when you say revenue, we need to grow, grow, grow. Lincoln County and Benihana County have the most growth in our state. And they are struggling with budgets from a county perspective. The cities have a different tax structure, so they are in a little bit different boat. But counties across South Dakota are struggling right now. And there's going to be some difficult discussions that are going to be occurring in that arena coming in the next, I would say, five to seven years.
So is there any proposed legislation? Because I do know there is a county government statewide association. But is that entity or any individual counties planning to propose legislation this next session that maybe would provide some additional opportunities to the counties?
They are. They're, over the last, at least two sessions, if not three, there has been an effort for counties to be able to levy a sales tax. And they have narrowed the scope to it has to be approved by the voters. It can only be for specific things, like there are counties who need new courthouses or new jails or some other function in the county. So they have tried to narrow that legislation. So it's very specific. So the commission just can't say, well, we need a little more money, half-cent sales tax to everybody. And they are gaining more ears. Every year, they seem to get a little bit more support for that. There is a state jail discussion right now on creating regional jails. And certainly, we have Clay County sitting right next to us, who just has a 40-some-million-dollar potential jail to be built, et cetera. And they are looking for ways to fund it other than property taxes as well. So there are some functions out there. Another effort into trying to help counties would be health insurance. Our county has had significant increases in the cost of our health insurance and to be able for counties to join the state health plan. We started that discussion earlier this year. It kind of hit a roadblock. But I have talked to some other county commissioners about trying to get that going again. Had we been on the state's plan this last year, it would have saved Yankton County $200,000. And that's significant funding when you think about it. So I do see, I'm very interested in being involved in that conversation. But again, that gets back to, we have to have health insurance. How do we control the cost? Because we know our revenues are kind of limited. So there's kind of a two-pronged approach. I tend to be a cost looker than the revenue gain because you can't count on revenue gain.
So I'm going to ask the question just because I don't know the answer. Does the county pay for 100% of the employee's health care for an individual?
They do. We pay 100% for individual. We pay nothing for family. So if they're on the family plan, we only give them the allowance for the individual.
All right. Thank you for that update. So at this time, there's approximately 700 jobs open in Yankton County. And for those who are curious, there's about 30,000 jobs open statewide. Does the county have a role to play in growing the workforce or growing housing?
In, you know, getting people to move to our community, you always have to ask yourself, why are you moving there? My family's a great example. We were living in Wichita, Kansas. Pretty good-sized city. I lived in Minneapolis metro before that. And we wanted to get back to this way of life. So it's the life that you're selling. And the other selling point is it's safe. I can walk the streets of Yankton without risk of running into some issues, et cetera. So the county's, the county's job in that picture is to make sure our community is remaining safe. That we have good infrastructure when folks want to move to our community or businesses want to move here. And to me, that's the role of county government in growing your workforce. Now, I know there's funding available for workforce housing now with the stimulus dollars the state allocated. And I can't remember how much it was, but it was a significant chunk to go to smaller communities. And I think we qualify as one of those smaller communities. So if something would be proposed to add that in our county somewhere, I certainly think the county government should be open to see where, what seat do we have at the table for that? Most of those will occur within the city limits, so oftentimes the city takes the lead. There's probably not too many apartment buildings that are built outside city limits. You would have to have a pretty good location with the infrastructure, the water, the sewer, et cetera. And usually those aren't there for something that large. But our smaller towns like Lesterville's and Utica's and Ballin-Gaveville and Mission Hill may not have the resources the city of Yankton does to do things like that. And I know out by Utica, there's a couple new homes that were just placed in there. I drove by them the other day. So that is housing that's available. So again, the county has a chair at the table. And I would say our number one priority is to say, you know what? We have a safe community because the county supports that safe community. We have a good ambulance service across the community, et cetera. So, which we spend significant dollars on.
Yeah, there've been some conversations about creating additional housing over in Gaveville. And Thrive has been a part of those conversations. And it's great to see contractors and developers who are interested in helping develop housing units within those smaller communities. So Yankton is healthier as a county when we do have that development happening in the county seat of the city as well as those smaller communities. It's good for all.
It's a great location between two larger, the city of Vermillion and city of Yankton.
Yeah, absolutely. It's also nice, as we talk about growing the workforce, to be able to bring younger families back who want to be involved in agriculture. Because getting started in agriculture is incredibly difficult, near impossible if you don't have those connections to someone who already has some land and is willing to work with you so that you can bring your family back and be involved in agriculture. So what will you do to make sure all Yankton County residents, whether they live inside city limits or outside of city limits, will be represented?
You know, I think that the original outreach meetings that we were having was a step in the right direction to try to reach more folks who are away from the center of government. Because all of our government services are essentially on the very bottom of the county. So it does make it challenging for that. And continuing our online presence, jobs, we have job openings at the county. How do you get your message out? Anymore, everybody looks to the little device that's glued to their palm to find that. So I live out in, out by Utica. It's 10 miles, driving 10, 12 miles from the city. So I think I do have a unique perspective in what it's like not to be part of the city. So I do bring that. There was always concern, and there was a movement to try to put our county back into districts. But to do that, to meet state law, you would end up with most of your representation from the city of Yankton anyway. And as it stands right now, Dan Clemish lives about two miles from me. So we both live out in the county. Don lives to the west. Joe, currently, he's on the commission, lives in the city of Yankton, does a lot of work out in the county as well. So to get the perspective of all of those folks is critical. And I think my background, living in a big cities and rural areas, I lived in a little town called Morton in North Dakota. And I was the new girl in town for three years. And it was a town of about 100 people, 150 people. So those perspectives, I think you always carry with you. And I went to a school that's no longer a school. In fact, they're growing marijuana in my high school now in Westington.
That's unique.
That is unique. It's not too many people who can say, I graduated from school, but now grows marijuana. But again, that gives you the perspective of, and I talked about, the conversations that are coming about counties and the governance over counties and how counties can financially continue. And there has been talk about some counties being insolvent. And how do you handle that? Well, my background with understanding what a school goes through in that situation, I think it brings you perspective, being a larger county, talking to a county that doesn't have as much revenue. You know what they're sitting there thinking. And you, again, try to walk down that center of the road and say, hey, we just need to talk about working together.
Yeah, I think from what I have seen and heard from multiple people in the community, sometimes it feels like it's the people who live outside city limits versus the people who live inside city limits. And it's helpful for all of us to continue to remind people, we are all residents of Yankton County. So the decisions made by the county commission, even if you live inside city limits, really do affect all of us. And having a strong city government, having a strong county government, having a strong financial, and county matters, but having good leadership in both those areas so they can work together and get through some of those challenges. Because if there's votes that need to take place that primarily impact people living in the county, but the people who live inside city limits also get to vote on those, it's that education and communication process that we need to continue to remind people to be engaged at both levels. And it's not, it should never be an us against them because we are Yankton County, all of us, whether you live inside city limits or not. So that's one of the messages I just continue to share with people because they sometimes forget how important it is for us to have strong county government.
Yeah, very true. And there's different parts of the budget that benefit those areas differently. You know, we have an ambulance service that the majority of the calls are within the city of Yankton. So someone who lives out here say, why is the county paying for that service when I don't benefit? Well, the folks who pay taxes in the city of Yankton are paying for the roads you're driving on. So it's really a balancing act within there. We, at all times, none of us want to use, want to see the sheriff show up at our house or the ambulance show up at our house. But when we need them, it's nice that they're there to come. Or the coroner or any other part of, we don't want to rely on indigent care. But if we're in that situation, that service is there for us. So it's, it's an interesting perspective. You know, running for office is a lot different than sitting in the chair, making the decisions. Because you really do have to put the time and the research in to understand what this decision will affect. And too often, when things are presented, there's a lot of missing holes. So I spend a great deal of time researching statutes, just talking to people about what their views are and figuring out the best vote at the time. Because we all look back and think, gosh, I wish I'd have known this then.
Yes, that is very true. But you can only vote on the information that you have at that point in time. So if there are people in Yankton County who do have information on certain topics, I know all commissioners would appreciate you reaching out to them, sharing the knowledge that you have, maybe from another place you lived or another experience that you've had, contact your elected official. contact your elected officials and share that information with them.
Very much so, and we, we saw that when we had the ambulance task force in 2020 and, and talking about the future of ambulance in our county. And that's another, the state has a study going on, because we are not the only community. Like everything, every community is struggling with that. And when we asked people to volunteer, we had some great volunteers, people who worked for volunteer services or they worked in the hospital system, et cetera, and it, it was just a good discussion.
So was there anything that you wanted to share with the viewers today that wasn't a part of the previously asked questions?
Gosh, I think I, I've just been rambling here for, for a little bit. You know, and I look back and, and when I decided to throw my name back in the hat, my husband and I always go out for our anniversary, and that's in January, so that's about the time you need to make the decision. And I asked him, I says, do you think I should run again? And he paused a long time, and he says, you know, as a taxpayer, I'm a hundred percent for you running. Because I, he said, I know the time you put into it. He said, but as your husband, I'm fifty-fifty. And he said that because he, he can see the time I invest and to seek what you see and, and to find a reasonable solution for everybody around the table. And, and it does take a lot out of you at times. And so it was a tough decision to do that, but in the end, I'm the math teacher, so a hundred percent, fifty percent, that's seventy-five percent. So I threw my, my name in the hat and gathered the signatures to try to do this again. And, and I do enjoy serving our community. There are better days than others, I will certainly not lie about that. But when you add them up, there's more better days than tough days. So, and, and I think in the end, we all grow a little, little bit from it.
Well, thank you for choosing to run again. I know the voters will appreciate that when they have the opportunity to vote for three of the five of you who are running for county commission. The other candidates are Matt Evans, Dan Clemish, John Markwart, and Ryan Heine. Election Day is Tuesday, November eighth, and absentee voting is open right now. So as soon as these videos are posted, you can go watch all the videos and then go and vote down at the county government center. So Sherri, thank you very much for joining us here today.
You're welcome, thank you.